My being here tonight and we'll start off with invocation by Mr. Richardson. So if y'all please join.
Please, Stan. Let's pray. God, it's good to be here tonight in such a good, small town. Thank you for the blessing of living here in our community with good people around us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. And to that end, Father, give us wisdom tonight as we talk about important things for our town. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Brad. I'll call a meeting to order here. No public comments. And so we have a consent agenda with one item on it with the Smith Grounds landscaping contract. But Alex, did we want to add this to the consent agenda?
Yes, please. This is the budget amendment for a GASB 96 implementation regarding software subscriptions.
All right, could you give us a brief rundown on it?
Absolutely, sir. The Government Accounting Standards Board from time to time sets new accounting standards for the town. And the newest one that we need to make sure we get in is it doesn't change our budget necessarily, other than changing where expenditures are coming from, just so we better account for our software subscriptions. So that's what this does. I wouldn't recommend adding it to the consent agenda. I would recommend just adding it at the end since it's the day of.
Don't add it to the consent.
I don't think you can.
Yes, sir.
Don't think you can.
We'll do it in number two.
Okay, so let's add this, make it nine A.
Well, let's do the consent first.
Yeah, we'll make it nine A. There you go.
We're still on the consent agenda. I'd move approval of the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right. Motion by Mr. Richardson.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ayers. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, all right. We have the regular agenda here, so do we have any additions other than this GASB added as nine A? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Shaw.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Groomes. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, all righty. We'll kick it off with text amendment 23.05.01, Emergency Disaster Restoration Services. So I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Max.
Hey, Council. How are you guys? How's everybody? Long time no see. Just saw you outside. All right, let me find the text amendment. Give me one second to scroll there. I didn't think the Smith Ground ones would be as long as it is. Apologize, I could have just zoomed on the left side. Okay, here it is. I apologize. Okay, so this is TX 230501. This is for Emergency Disaster Restoration Services with or without fenced outdoor storage. The applicant requested a text amendment to add this use in the mixed use to C-74 Business Center and Industrial Zoning Districts. They originally just said with fenced outdoor storage, but staff's recommending with or without. But just to give you some history on that, the applicant came by and staff noticed and working with them that the use was not allowed in the MU2 zoning district. But this type of use can be found in most municipalities. And I think that the service would greatly be helpful for the town of Stallings. There's lots of residential uses, there's lots of commercial uses that could take advantage of this use in Stallings. So staff is recommending approval of this text amendment, but we just want with or without fenced outdoor storage. We're just recommending that small change. This will help the economic development plan for commercial businesses. It's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. All those zoning categories are consistent with those future land use categories. They kind of closely align and overlap. And this is what the text amendment would look like if it was approved in the use table. Would add this line and L, it would be L in MU2, C-74, Business Center, and Industry. Any questions? And also the applicant here.
All right. Any questions for Max?
Did the planning board review Max? I don't see it in the write-up.
So the planning board recommended approval. They did not see the with or without, but it's very close. They said that they just saw the with, outdoor storage.
Unanimous, though.
It was unanimous.
Any other questions?
I didn't get to talk to Alex today due to work, but I mean, this is a, this is not like a temporary while there's restoration going on. This is actually like a business.
Yeah, and yeah, this would be just a permanent business if it was to locate one of these zoning categories. And the applicant's here with a presentation as well, if you would like to hear that.
Sure.
Yeah. They can explain what their business is.
And this is by right in those districts.
Correct. This is what the text amendment would be. Let me pull up that presentation from the applicant and I'll let them. Of course. And just press the down button to go forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Kenny Smith. I'm a commercial real estate broker with New South Properties over in Charlotte. I'm here tonight to support and favor a text amendment 230501 on behalf of Josh Spangler and Spangler Restoration. This is real brief. I have sat on your side of the dais before, so I don't want to drone on and on, but I've got a real brief introduction into what this industry is and does, and then more specifically, how he would function at said property. Y'all might have remembered last year when it got down to single digits right around Christmas time and small business homeowners' pipes would burst, flooding would result. We're looking at a possible thunderstorm rolling through. A big storm may come through. Somebody's home or business may catch on fire, may fall victim to vandalism. All of these type things are, happen, and then they need what we call a crisis recovery specialist to come in and help bring that property back to its original state prior to the event. And that is what Mr. Spangler and Spangler Restoration, they do. They are certified and trained, so they work with the insurance companies and their clients to make sure you get through the process and then you get the funds you need to have your property, again, be it a small business, a residential home, to have it restored to its original state prior to, to the event. Who is Spangler Restoration? They were founded in 2009. They're currently corporately headquartered in Indian Trail. They're the largest independently owned restoration contractor in North Carolina. Company-wide, they have 95 employees across five offices, and I'll get to a minor change in that here in a minute. And then they've been voted number two on Charlotte's Fast 50 for growing companies in the area. So it's a locally-owned company, individually-owned, deep roots in this, in this general area of Union County. So this is where I think probably answers hopefully most of the real questions. This is to me the crux of, of the slideshow, and that is, how does emergency restoration, how does it operate on a property? Well, 50% of the internal space, it's just general office uses. It's your accounting, it's sales, it's administrative, it's schedulers, it's payable, it's receivables, it's just, it's just general office. The other half will store equipment that you take out to the sites to help fix people's homes. They may have contents from a home or small business that needs to be stored while they're in there doing their repair work, restoration work, and then other tools that you may take out to the job site. The rear of the yard will be fenced, it'll be screened, won't really be visible from 74 Stallings Road, but it will be, and they do this because in their current location over in Indian Trail, they've had catalytic converters and other items taken out of their work vehicles overnight. So this is more a security measure for maybe six, seven service trucks that they would store out back overnight. Why is this text amendment important? As with every zoning ordinance across the country, you have businesses sometimes that just fall in between the cracks on a zoning code. And this business happened to fall between, between that crack. So this will allow you guys to properly identify emergency restoration, disaster restoration service in Mr. Spangler's business. If the text amendment passes, we will consolidate Indian Trail in a Charlotte office and relocate all of that to Stallings. It will be his corporate headquarters, and there will be approximately 45 jobs out of the location. Not everybody will be in there at one time. You have some folks that are out on job sites, others are, are working from home. And then lastly, this use, we believe, is just a vital community service to people when they're in a time of crisis. And so with all of that, I appreciate your time and hearing us out. Any other questions? I'm happy to answer. Mr. Spangler's happy to answer, and we would hope for your approval. But thank you very much.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Any questions for me?
Anything for Max?
Well, just, just clarify the screening requirements. Outdoor storage, this applicant, Mr. Smith, said they, they were going to screen, but does the text amendment and the code ordinances require screening and other uses?
With this text amendment, it would not be a requirement. So it would be just site-specific.
Right, but this applicant is committed to screening.
Correct, yeah. They are loc, they, they want to locate at a property that is already, has a fence on the, on the site.
Right. Okay.
All righty, I'll close the public hearing. And then any further discussion from the council? Here now, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'll move approval of text amendment 230501, adding Emergency Disaster Restoration Services with or without fenced outdoor storage to the table of uses.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Richardson to approve the text amendment, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, all right. Thank y'all for coming, for coming to Stallings.
Wonderful, y'all. Good night.
Take it easy, guys.
All righty, I'll read the statement of consistency and reasonableness for text amendment 23.05.01. Request was to allow for the use of emergency disaster restoration services with or without fenced outdoor storage in MU2, C-74, B.C., and independent zoning districts. Read the bottom paragraph. "The town council hereby votes that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent and reasonable with the comprehensive land use plan adopted on November 27, 2017, based on the goals and objectives set forth in the document promoting quality development and consistency with all state mandated land use regulations established through North Carolina General Statute 160D. The town council approves the proposed amendment and stated that the town council finds and determines that the text amendment is consistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the comprehensive land use plan for the following reasons. One, the text amendment promotes more commercial development opportunities in accordance with the town's economic development plan; and two, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan." Can I get a motion on the statement of consistency and reasonableness?
I'll just say some of it.
Some of it, that's good. Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to shorten that one day.
What's that, Max?
I'll try to shorten that statement for him one day.
That's all right. I edited it myself. All right, next up is text amendment 23.05.02, Home Occupation with Ruben. How you doing tonight?
Good doing, fine, Mayor. Council members, how you doing tonight?
Very good.
Good here. All right. Presenting text amendment 23.05.02, amendment to Article 10.1-21, Home Occupation. This request is to add to text, add text to Article 10.1-21, stating that automobile repair shops, body shops, and garages are not allowed as a home occupation. The current text amendment reads as follows. "Without limiting the generality of the foregoing, automobile repair shops, body shops, and garages shall not be regarded as a home occupation." History, home occupation allows residents to install Stallings to conduct a business under Article 10.1-21 that does not create an adverse impact in their surrounding neighborhood. The reasoning, we've had complaints from residents in different neighborhoods about loud noises at nighttime, aerosols, odors, increased street traffic, and junk vehicles from the operation of automobile repair shops, body shops, and garages in residential zoned areas, thus creating an adverse impact in their surrounding neighborhood. So it's my recommendation that, for approval of this text amendment, to maintain the safety, appearance, and property values of the community. And I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you, Ruben. Any questions, Stephen?
I'm assuming that this is in response to issue that we're having over in the Spring Hill area?
If you're, if you're referring to Mr. Helms off of Birchville. It was a, there was a gentleman that came, I believe, at the last meeting. Yes, we've, we've had a case open on a, his neighbor from operating in a body shop. And we had complaints from him, a neighbor next door, regarding nighttime work, aerosols, and increased traffic from bringing cars off-site to the property. And so this is to, from here on out, to stop that from ever happening again within the town limits.
My question is, can, is there a way to limit it just to neighborhoods, but not to...
As of right now, it's just to residentially zoned areas. So if it's zone residential, then this would apply to that as well. If you're referencing to like any like larger, lots of lands.
Or somebody who, like, say they're on an acre, they're not in a neighborhood.
So home occupation just strictly deals with residentially zoned areas. And so to change it for, I'm not sure what the process would be to change it to, to that, or to make any exceptions to it.
But change the text amendment, as long as we write it on the board, on the screen and get that language tonight.
I see Heather's point. I mean, we have people that own, you know, two, three, four, five acres, and I'm sure they work on their cars and might run a business out of their home and not affecting anybody because they're, they're large acres and not in a neighborhood. So I don't want to restrict somebody's livelihood if we can help it, so.
Or it to be... Under a lot size?
Can we table it and ask staff to come back with that, a good wording that would take our considerations?
Certainly.
I'm, I'm just looking, first, I don't, did you open the public hearing? I'm not sure.
Yes, ma'am.
You did, okay. I'm looking at Article 10, under Home Occupations, and one of the regulations is that only one vehicle principally used in connection with the home occupation shall be parked or stored on the premises. And there's various language about that. So if there's, if you can only have one vehicle anyway, I don't know, I was assuming this wasn't allowed, and this was just to make it clear to the public that these types of shops were not allowed as a home occupation. Make your job easier, right? If it's in black and white.
Yeah. And so I'm, the way that I've interpreted is as long as they're, because you can have a garage, you can have a, you can do automobile repair, as long as it's located either within a building on the property or in the, in, located in the main residence. And so if you just have a vehicle in a garage on your property, that's fine, but bringing vehicles to the property, that's the way I've, I've interpreted my, that area.
It's not like your buddy's got a car and you're going to do some work for him. This is like a legitimate business being run out of a, a house, basically.
Yes, with, with multiple cars on the lot, and it's, it changes daily as to the cars that are being brought to the property.
Mr. Ortiz, if somebody was operating legally, a body shop off of their property, and the ordinance changed, and now it would, you know, even before, right? Would it be grandfathered in? If that makes sense?
If they were to have come in and obtained a home occupation permit with us prior to this being passed, then yes.
Thank you.
So Heather, did that make sense what Melanie was talking about? Where it's already...
I mean, another regulation is, no equipment or process shall be used in connection with a home occupation that creates a noise, vibrations, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference off premises.
This just effectively makes it black and white.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Melanie, Ruben, or anybody?
I'm, I'm concerned about, I hadn't thought about it, so thank you, Heather. I, I am concerned about the number of properties in our town that, that are of a certain size where the noxious fumes, odors, noise, vehicle numbers, junk cars affect no one but the property owner. So I don't know if we were headed there, but I'm, I'm curious about that question and feel like I'd be better served to have one more go at this after reading the ordinance and clarifying. If that makes sense? That means moving into the last meeting in July, I guess, but I, I, I think what we're trying to do is prevent what we're trying to prevent, which is a lot of noise inside a neighborhood where, where your neighbor's on a quarter acre, half acre lot. But I hadn't thought about that until you brought it up, Heather, about a larger plot of land that's, somebody's running a business off of.
All right, well, let's do that. Let's push it till the first, the second Monday in, our only meeting in July. And if you have, write up your concerns, send them to Ruben and copy Alex, copy Council, and copy Melanie, and then we'll get something drafted that everybody can live with and protects our community. Everybody all right with that?
State that you'll recess the public hearing until July 10.
July?
I believe it's the 10. I mean, the, the meeting in July, the day. July the 10th.
All right, I move, we move the suspended public hearing until the July 10 council meeting. So I'll close the public hearing and we'll work with Ruben and get this.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I mean, we have several folks that live in my district that are actual mechanics, and sometimes they'll do a job on the side at their garage. That, that would, with this, I mean, theoretically, they shouldn't be doing that the way it's worded now.
Correct. It has to be within the structure. If they're doing like, if they're doing like on outside, on the side of the house, yeah, technically they're in violation.
Yeah.
Anything else for me?
Anything?
He's got more tools in his garage than most of us probably have collectively here, so.
All right, thank you, Ruben.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Ruben. Yep.
All right, next up is our 2324 budget. First up is the budget and stormwater fee changes, public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to, who's running that? Alex or...
Sure, happy to.
Yeah, for the record, we need to, I know the council is fully aware of everything, but if we can go into the new fees and for the record and...
Absolutely, yes, sir. So just last time, the, the board discussed classifying apartment complexes as commercial properties, you're given several options, how to do that, and selected, doing it based on impervious surface calculations, treating them like a commercial property. Previously, they were charged the same as any individual household, single-family home, and the board was like, hey, that doesn't seem fair, given the impact of impervious surface. That's what, you know, that's what impacts the stormwater system. Not necessarily whether it's strictly commercial or strictly residential, or those kind of things are, doesn't really affect whether it's how the calculation is done in practice. So did that, and we've properly advertised for a hearing. Thank you to Ms. Nichols and Ms. Cox for their work on that, as well as Ms. Provuznak for getting all the changes together. In addition, last time, council directed staff to add $100,000 from stormwater reserve funds for the design part of the Twin Pines Stormwater Project. So we're probably looking to start that process in the winter, you know, as we get cash flow back in December, January, February, that timeframe. And I believe that's anything, Ms. Provuznak. Correct me if I'm wrong, is that, is that it? Thank you.
So the fee goes up for the apartments to $67, but as well for the...
That's right.
For all residential, it changes as well? I just want to put that on the record.
That's right, yes, sir. And thank you for pointing that out, Mayor Dunn. So the stormwater fee increase goes from $46 to $67, based on the ERU, as well as the, the typical residential rate going up as well, as it's outlined in the packet and in your information.
And then the reason for that needing increase is the number of projects we have on.
That's right, yes, sir. So it's a variety of reasons, but the main issue is our stormwater infrastructure is aging. The rate has never gone up, but the cost of doing the projects has increased just dramatically. So it's a combination of the number of, of projects increasing because of our aging infrastructure combined with inflationary costs year after year after year.
All right, any questions for Alex?
Talked last, you said that maybe there was some, that the apartment complex was actually going to be speaking tonight. Yes, so we, we wanted to make sure that we notified the apartment complex and certainly let them know about their opportunity, how they could reach out, and certainly let them know about the public hearing. And I don't, I don't believe they're here. And I recognize everyone here, so they're not.
All right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak? All right, not here, not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll vote on these separately. So can I get a motion on the stormwater fee changes?
Sure, I'll, I'll move to approve the stormwater fee changes to residential at $67 per year and to non-residential ERU at $67 per year.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Groomes. The vote in favor of the rate change, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As have it, all right, thank you, Alex. Next up is the budget adoption. We need to open the public hearing on that as well.
That was all for everything, and we did the original public, budget public hearing at the last meeting.
Okay.
And you closed it, so it's fine.
So do we need to vote on it?
You do need to vote on the budget, yes, sir. Just, you don't have to reopen a public hearing.
Okay, got you. Alex, did you want to make any comments for the record on the, on the budget?
Yes, sir. No, no additional comments. Happy to make, comment or answer any questions, though.
I think we're just waiting for everybody to be here. We had some absences last time for good reason, so most of us are here, so.
Most of us here. Well, any comments, questions?
I'll still say for the record, I'm not happy with the budget. I'm worried that we're using a million dollars that we could basically be using to pay the building off or do any number of things. Everybody thinks that we're going to go into a down period. I've always heard that when the economy goes south, cash is king. And so I, I just, I would prefer not to cover the, the gap with our existing funds. I think we're just moving the problem to next year, and we're going to be right back in the same place. And I've always been told that when you see the problem, you fix it then, you don't put it off. So I'm not happy with how we're closing the gap with the ARPA funds. The whole reason we did the transfer to the police department budget was so that we could take and use that funds for things that the town needed in the future. And I feel like we're kind of in it just to make ends meet for the budget this year.
All right, appreciate your comments, and I'll echo the same thing. I know y'all tired of hearing me say that, but, you know, to, to take a million dollars out of our fund balance is concerning. And so, you know, I talked to Alex about it many times and again today, and, you know, we're going to have to have a tax increase next year. You know, it just remains to be seen. So everybody's fully aware that it's going to be a tight budget year next year, and so, you know, appreciate staff and Alex being cognizant of that, and we'll try to work through it and just hopefully our sales tax revenues increases. So any other comments?
Well, just one that maybe we haven't talked about is we raised taxes last year. I mean, with the rate decrease and a revenue, it was a, so I don't know that I would be in favor of a back-to-back tax increase, given a lot of unknowns and given that the, the money that we're using from ARPA is exactly how we're supposed to be using it. So I'm... So I'm comfortable with where we are, and I think the staff's done a really good job on the budget. So I'll make the motion whenever we're ready.
Yeah, you're right, we did increase it, it was just hidden a little bit with being revenue neutral.
Right, yeah.
But go ahead, if you're ready.
So I make a motion to adopt the FY24 operating budget and five-year capital improvement plan.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson, any further comments? Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Shaw, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to be opposing.
Mr. Ayers opposed, so motion passes four to one. Thank you staff, thank you Alex. Chicken ordinance. Yeah, Mr.?
Thank you Mayor, thank you town council for having me back, having me back up here. I'll keep this brief, got a short little presentation regarding the chicken ordinance that my predecessor colleague had created. Is there a way to make it smaller?
At the very top, there's a minus and plus.
Oh, I see, yeah. All right. All right, got a Stallings chicken ordinance for June 26th of 2023. Purpose, provide information to Stallings Town Council about the chicken permit program. Metrics, current permits we have for chickens in the town of Stallings are two. One was actually renewed, and we have one pending, she is waiting on the chicken coop from her sister. Inspection's completed, we had one that was completed by Colleen, and I did one preliminary for the one who's waiting for the chicken coop to show up. Now complaints related to permitted properties, we have zero, but that's only for permitted properties. Total this year for chicken complaints has been two, and those properties have just removed the chickens. They decided not to come get a permit for it, they just got rid of them. Time spent by code enforcement on chicken permit program, I estimate about an hour monthly. When people call me, ask me about, can they have chickens? I give them the information, and they do with it what they please. Conclusion, the chicken permit program, I believe, is an essential tool in maintaining the quality of the town. It gives residents the opportunity to raise chickens in town limits, while also limiting its potential to be a community nuisance. So my recommendation of the town continues with this program. Any questions?
Or do we need a motion to approve it, I mean?
Oh no, it's just an update for you all, I think it's a...
Yeah, when we first, when we first approved it, we said we want to kind of get a...
A trial.
Touch point, and before we, and at some point, actually it was like this time period, so.
Well, I was going to ask former Mayor Linda Paxton to comment, because this came up many years ago. Aaron remembers, we've had chickens, we've had pigs, and...
Support animals.
Support animals, whatever you want to call them. So, all right, well, thank you Ruben.
No problem counsel, Mayor, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, Eunice, you got a committee application?
Yes sir, wanting to talk about it a little bit, or?
Yeah, is it here? I don't, I don't...
He's not here, but, yeah, unfortunately he couldn't be here this evening, his wife had a medical procedure, but he wanted to, so just gave him the permission.
Yeah, so his name is Mark, and he lives in town. He is a very big pickleball advocate here. So he is currently, I think neighbors with some of the people that are on the committee right now, and showing some interest, and really just wants to come out, really big supporter of the parks. I think he has a new kind of spunk about him that'll be really exciting. And like I said, he's really passionate about pickleball. So I think he was really excited to see the pickleball programs restarted, and this was kind of like his way to really start getting involved and maybe help the community in a different way that we don't necessarily have access to right now. So I highly recommend putting him on the committee.
Does anybody need to see his application?
We saw it.
I met him too.
It was on your email, sir.
Oh, it's in, that's right, it was on attachment, that's right.
That's right. He was at the last Parks and Rec meeting, he seemed to jive with the rest of the group, so.
All right, can I get a motion? What was his name?
His name is Mark Leadham, and in the motion, if you wouldn't mind just saying, the term expires 3/31/24. That's because the term goes not with the person, but just with the position. So the one that's open expires 3/31/24.
And how do you say his name again?
It's Lead, L-E-A-D, and then E-M, last name, Leadham.
Oh, I thought you were...
L-E-A-D-E-M.
Leadham, okay, all right, Stephen, can you make a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec Committee application for Mark Leadham, going through now until 3/31 of 2024.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Groome, all in favor? Ayes have it, all right, thank you, thank you Eunice.
Hey, hey Eunice, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes sir.
When we resurface this year, are we replacing the nets to be the ones that you can raise and lower?
So that's something that we're looking at right now. It really just depends on how far that money is going to stretch us for the resurfacing of the courts. Because that's the first priority, is just getting all the cracks fixed. Yep. Thank you, any more questions?
Awesome, thank you.
All right, Aaron's up with annexation 57, Lawyer's Road.
Yes sir, there's not very much to present at this one. This, per state statute, the count, anytime we get a petition, the count, council just has to direct me to investigate this petition. We received a petition a few weeks ago for a property on Lawyer's Road. And so all this resolution does is just has the council formally tell me to start investigating that petition. It's the first of three steps.
Anybody got the map? I couldn't, I thought this was already in our town.
It's a little donut hole between courtyards at Emerald Lake and Stevens Mill. It's 1.23 acres.
All right, any questions for Aaron? Yeah, this state statute, so can I get a motion for somebody to approve the resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition received under North Carolina General Statute 168-31?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shaw.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ayers, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Aaron.
Mr. Mayor. Anybody know why?
He is working with Mr. Shaw regarding resigning the property.
As part of the investigation, Steve, come on.
I figure, I figured they were already on top of something else, they already knew that a little bit more.
All righty, Alex is up with specialty grass.
We're not into that kind of stuff down here.
So as we all know...
Colorado or something?
As we all know, the town operates a stormwater fund, and the purpose of that is to fund our ongoing duty to maintain the town's public stormwater system. So it's not all stormwater, but it's all stormwater within the town's public stormwater easements and retention ponds, things like that. So one of the issues we've been looking at, Mr. Parker and myself, is just, hey, how do we make sure we're being, offering good service and doing a good job, but also being cost efficient? And one of the things we've identified is the way we handle specialty grass that's located within the stormwater easements. We're doing, we're more generous than other jurisdictions, and I wanted to bring it to the town council's attention and ask for your direction. So currently, our practice is that if we, if somebody has installed specialty grass, and when I mean specialty, I mean something like Bermuda, Zoysia grass, something that's probably not your typical fescue grass. This happens in about 30% of the stormwater repair jobs that we have. And our current new development, we're tending to see more and more of that specialty grass. And while hopefully that won't be an issue for many years to come, right? When the infrastructure's in, it's good, it should last for a long time. But it is something to take note of. So when we make a repair within the stormwater easement and take out that grass to do the work, our practice has been the town to pay our contractor to reinstall that specialty grass. And after that, we've looked at several different jurisdictions where they've done. Mint Hill does not install specialty grass. If a property owner wants to reinstall specialty grass, then Mint Hill will just leave it bare, and they take care of it. Indian Trail will sometimes install specialty grass if the property owner provides and purchases the grass. So although keep in mind, even there, because they do the work in-house, they're not paying the extra for labor, right? We hope to get there one day where we do a lot more of the work in-house. But right now, this kind of thing, we're not. So how, is this a big deal? You know, well, typically, a fescue grass job, standard job maybe runs about 1,500 bucks just for the fescue standard replacement. And for specialty grass, it tends to be double that approximately. So you're looking at, you know, 1,500, $2,000 to replace it with specialty grass. And from there, that is taking money away from other actual stormwater repair jobs. So it is good from the standpoint of kind of a customer service, making that property owner happy, but it does hurt the mission of the stormwater fund in that we're not able to use the funds for other projects. And we've started doing some of our catch basin seals in-house, and that's saved us a good amount of money, probably about 1,500, 2,000 approximately per job. So we can do them for roughly what we've seen so far, maybe about 500 bucks. So you could see a standard job, 1,500 bucks for specialty grass, it's three catch basin seals. That's why we wanted to bring it to your attention. So we wanted to give the board several different options to consider of. You're not limited to these, it's just to help your thought process. So the first option would be to not to provide nor install any specialty grass. I believe this would be our engineering staff preference, just solely for the fact that if you have specialty grass, sometimes it's harder, not happy with the work that's being done, you have to go back again, and it ends up adding up over time. But other options, the second options include installing the specialty grass if the property owner purchases or provides the specialty grass. And then the third option would be to reimburse the property owner for installing the standard fescue obtained from the contractor quote. And then the property owner may use the reimbursement to purchase and install the specialty grass. Essentially, we would get from our contractor the cost of what it would take to reseed for fescue. And if the property owner indicated they wanted to put in specialty grass, we would just leave it bare and write the property owner a check or reimburse them for the difference in the cost of the specialty grass. I can...
That would sort of be a blend of number one, because we wouldn't install it. Give them the option of, we're not going to install it, but if you want to buy Zoysia or Bermuda, we'll give you the amount of fescue cost.
Absolutely, so perhaps that's the middle ground.
This actually impacted one of the guys that's on our, on our planning board. We planted something, he had to go back behind and kill it all to replant what was in the rest of his yard. So... I don't know, for me, if we're tearing something up of somebody's, I expect you to pay it. If I took my car to dealership and they worked on it, even if it's under warranty and they scratched the paint, I expect them to fix the paint.
But we're also doing a repair to their stormwater system that is costing us a lot of money, much more than it cost the grass seed. They're benefiting from that. I'm all in favor of number three.
Number three is we're just giving them the amount that fescue would cost. And then they themselves would make the difference.
That's right.
And if they wanted fescue, they plant it themselves.
That's right.
Because with Bermuda, don't you have to do sod?
Yes ma'am, I believe so.
Have to, have to, but isn't it...
It's probably helpful to get it, I mean, just probably like regular grass, and I'm talking like I'm a grass expert, don't take anything I say.
And house, so then you're paying somebody...
That's right.
So if they wanted fescue though, we'll still plant the fescue?
We would draw and seed it.
We don't, number three is not exactly what... Three is reimburse them for installing standard fescue.
Well, that's if they're going with specialty grass.
Yes it is, that's fine.
So this is only if there's specialty grass there?
Yeah, and if they want us to, you know, we'll certainly talk to the property owner, someone might not care.
Would you need a vote?
Please.
Make a motion that we adopt item three, option three?
I'll second that.
All right.
So what if, yeah, if you, well, if you're tearing something up, you should fix it. That's my, I mean, that's...
Noted.
Huh?
Noted.
Well, I mean, if they, if they tore up anything else, the driveway, you'd fix the driveway, right?
What are magnitude, how many of these 1,500 dollar extra charges would we do in the course of a year?
I don't have an exact number, forgive me, I know it's about 30% of the work we do, so let's assume, you know, we do 30 projects, let's say... I don't know Brad, I would suspect it would maybe 30,000 dollars. We can come back and get an exact number, if that'd be better.
I totally see what you're saying.
Well, no, no, here's the big problem I have. I know of five projects, stormwater, that we're going back for the third time. That means three times you're tearing somebody's yard up potentially that has specialty grass. I think if, I think if you're going in there and you tear it up, and you do it three times, and it's costing the homeowner, you know, 10,000 dollars to reseed his grass every time we have to go in there and fix it? I mean, that's, that's the complaint from the person on the, the, the planning board. He had to go back and fix it three times because it took that many times to fix the problem. So I, that's my problem, is that we could literally be fixing a problem with our infrastructure and then asking our residents to pay thousands of dollars just to fix their yard that we tore up. It's wrong, it's wrong. If, if you tore up anything else in the, in the lot, except for the yard, we would be respected to pay for it, period.
All right, any other questions? I got a motion on the floor from Mr. Shaw, I got a second from Mrs. Groome's, so we'll need to take a vote on that. So the motion for Mr. Shaw was to adopt number three. So all in favor of that, say aye? Aye, aye, that's, aye, Brad?
I'm opposed, I'm with Steve on this.
So we got three, all opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
All right, three to two, the motion passes, number three.
All right.
Great, thank you.
I tried, I tried.
All right, next up...
Well, I didn't hear the three things after I had already... Seconded that they'd been out there three times.
Yeah.
That's, that's one case. All right, next up is our closed session pursuant to North Carolina...
We got 9A to do real quick.
Oh, 9A, excuse me, the Gaspie.
The Gaspie.
The great Gaspie.
Can somebody make the motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve ABO number 22, the GASP 96 implementation for software subscriptions.
All right, thank you. Motion by Mr. Ayers.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Richardson, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. All right, now, closed session pursuant to Statute 143-3186. Appreciate it staff.
Good night, anybody need to bite in? And we need to invite Karen to stay.
Yeah, can we invite Karen, please?
And can somebody make the motion to have Karen read? All right, motion by Mr. Drake. Read, stake, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Groome, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you Karen.